Good evening, good evening. Hello. Welcome everybody to our third community outreach gathering where we're going to try to get some input from you primarily although I will do some introductory remarks. But one quick question first, how many people were at the March 22nd overview that we gave high school, at the high school auditorium, I'm sorry, yeah, that's where it was, I couldn't remember what it was? And how many people are familiar with the different options and such that we're looking at? Just trying to gauge how much I need to get into the details before we get started in talking. So David, you didn't apparently fill in your cousin?
No, I did not.
He was the only one who doesn't know what's going on and he's your cousin. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, we'll fill you in as we keep going because everybody else seems to know the options that we're considering and I don't want to waste our time when we really want to hear from you. But I want to, I do want to give you just a few updates since March 22nd, some of the things that are happening. First of all, just, so everybody understands, you know, the school board understands that there are some definite benefits to doing some form of reconfiguration as far as the educational offerings that we have, as far as managing staff, decreasing some operational costs and some other benefits for doing that. And we do see that, you know, different options present some different abilities to in fact get those different benefits. But we have also said, to be very transparent, from what we've seen so far, that, that, we have said that it's not likely, though we still can be convinced, that option four and five, as we call them, both the ones that involve building new schools, that to date at least, we don't believe that we've seen that, that the benefits that we would gain in savings of operational costs and educational benefits really justify the very high costs. But we are continuing to look to see that because we also want to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity, that, that we're not missing something that we really should be doing now because we're trying to look 10 to 20 years into the future and we, we're trying to get set for that. So we do want to, you know, we're still very open and we are still exploring to make sure that we're not missing something and missing a good opportunity today to be set for the next 10 to 20 years by looking at the possibility of building a new school. So we, we actually have two committees that we've organized, subcommittees of, of the school board. Two of the board members are digging in more deeply to the Whitenburg work, the, the costs, the modeling that was done, and then two board members are looking more deeply into the educational benefits. And we will be doing that over the next number of weeks to really make sure that, that we've fully done our due diligence on this process. But tonight, what's very important is we want to hear from, from you. And on your tables, our information about, some of the information that we previously have disclosed at the March 22nd meeting and an explanation of the different options. And we want, we're going to have a board member sit down at each of your table, and in fact, probably the table that has two individuals, if you could join the table over here that has three, because we want to have a little bit fuller dialogue and have at least a few people at each table. But school board members will be sitting down with you as well as administrators to take notes and, and we will kind of go through and get your input. So, anything else? All right. So again, I'd like to just start if we could do introductions. I'm Martin alone, I'm on the school board and I have a junior in high school, a boy who's in high school, and I have a daughter who is in eighth grade, so.
Steve Sarin, I have two kids at Rick Marcon, a first grader.
Well, let me just also, I apologize, they went through Rick Marcon School is where they went to school.
Do you live here in the neighborhood?
I live in South Carolina.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm June and we live right in this neighborhood and I have a fourth and kindergarten here at this school.
My name's Carrie and my kids go here as well at Orchard, I have a kindergartner and a third grader.
My name's Liz and I have a first grader and a third grader at Orchard.
I'm Al, Margaret Lance and I have two kids here at Orchard and one at the middle school.
I'm Sandy Dooley and I live on East Terrace and I wasn't able to attend any of the other meetings, so here I am.
Excellent. Welcome everybody. So, this is a fairly loose kind of discussion that we want, I want to go wherever you folks want to as far as the discussion. I, I am looking for input certainly though, as far as, we do have the five options, you know, I did mention that the option four and five are, are less likely right now, but we're really open to understand the pros and cons of those as well as the first three options. So, let me just grab that and bring that over here. And I know that Jean has some very strong opinions about that, that she has been helpfully sharing with us at school board meetings lately, we really appreciate you coming Jean. So, what we're looking at, just as a reminder, is the first scenario is really the status quo and just basic maintenance. While the second scenario is to do more upgrades, moving walls, putting in wider doors, changing the structure within the buildings to make it more, I hate to say 21st century learning because Al's going to ask me what that means, but I mean, it's a different way of, that they're trying to have kids in small groups and have more flexible spaces which I guess certainly makes some sense. And the, and the third scenario is actually consolidating into two schools and Chamberlain would be the one that would be closed in that scenario and that's because that, at this point, we see is having the, the biggest pressures on that school with the increasing noise levels at the airport that we're expecting and as well as the neighborhood is contracting somewhat, so. And then of course, scenario four and five, which you probably know the most about because it's, it's got a lot of press and it was what was discussed in the task force report. And there is this other scenario that's out there, but we've been focusing on these right now and that involves moving Chamberlain to, to another location and that's kind of floating in the background as well. Also, scenarios two through five involve upgrades to the high school and middle school. And they range a little bit depending on what the other scenarios are because a couple of the scenarios would entail having the fifth grade move to the middle school, which would, which would change the cost somewhat for the middle school upgrades. So having, even though I said I wasn't going to give you all that background, I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page as far as what we're looking at. So, let me throw for you all, one concern that I'm thinking about, but then please weigh in on whatever, however you want. One concern that, a major concern, is certainly that any number of these options may involve fairly significant investment by the community from $9 million, but you know, I consider that a little bit different, $9 million over 20 years is maintenance, you know, that's something that just is needed, to $35 million for a new single elementary school, plus there's 20 some million dollars for changes to the middle school and, and high school. My concern and what we're looking at, one of the things, is what happens if four or five years down the road, we have a tight budget, we are having regular budget increases and, and we're, and the community doesn't support the budget that we have? In that scenario, we would, we wouldn't be able to stop paying for, for our debt service obviously, and programming would probably have to be cut. And that programming, where it would be cut, is not elementary schools, I mean, that's pretty well set, it would be at the high school, which we have a very rich program now. That's one of the risks that we're looking at. But we're also looking at, if we just go forward as we are now, there, as our costs are increasing in running three elementary schools, you know, are there operating costs that we haven't really identified or understood fully? You know, is, is it actually, will it be over the time, less expensive, less cost to the taxpayer if we build a new school than if we maintain our other schools? With the same concern there, that if maintaining the schools is costing more and more and having the staff, the FTEs spread out among three different elementary schools where we're not having, you know, we're having smaller and smaller class sizes, again, we get to the point where we may have to cut programming at the high school. So it kind of works both ways. You know, if we can build a new school or do one of these scenarios that will help us, you know, take care of costs over the longer term and preserve all of our programming, that's kind of one way that we're looking at. So, I've talked enough, I would, I would certainly want to have you folks weigh in. I know there are people here at this table who have lots to say.
Just, you know, start in where you left off. Do we know what the operational cost savings is of these options and is that enough of a driver for us to make this decision? I mean, is that something we know?
That, the operational costs, this is part of what we are exploring more closely, the subcommittee I mentioned and then the whole board. Because as we've dug into it, are we being, it seems we may, for this exercise that we've done, that the assumptions may have been too conservative. And we're really trying to push harder to really, you know, to make sure, I mean, the utilities and such are easier to predict, but how the staff and FTEs will be in two schools versus one versus three, we're pushing a little harder to really understand that. So the answer is unfortunately, as we know them right now, it would be more costly and a bigger threat to build a new school.
Right.
As we understand it right now.
Right.
So.
Yes, well first we want to get, make sure we're understanding the answer.
Yeah, but you're right, absolutely, no, that's absolutely right. June, what do you think? Let me throw it over to you.
I, I right now only have general thoughts about it, it's not like, you're, you're, the way that you presented it is much different than the way that's been presented at all the other meetings, you know, from the financial perspective and it, there's a lot more to think about in terms of long-term costs, whether or not the long-term costs of maintaining the schools would, would balance out building a whole new school is not something that I had necessarily thought about. Did the, the, the people who did the financial study, did they think about?
Yes, it's part, it's part of the financial study. It is part of where you see the, in, in some of the, I guess we don't have that document here, but one of the ways we presented this at March 22nd.
So the different, you know, $9 million up to 35 million, that took into account over, right, over the 20-year period, yeah.
Yeah.
Well then, from that perspective, I, you know, I feel like it's pretty obvious.
Yes, but we are digging deeper to make sure that we haven't undercounted or been way too conservative on the operational savings.
Um, you know, my sort of general thought is that it seems like something is going to be done and so, for me, the, you know, scenario two or three seems like the best compromise between the fact that, a lot of the community doesn't seem like they want to, to change very much from what I've heard, but that the administration and city officials seems like they're pushing really hard for change. So if it's going to be, if it needs to be a compromise, I feel like scenario two or scenario three would be fine with me.
I wonder what teachers think? Do teachers have an opinion about it?
Um, I'm sure they do.
I just wonder, it might be interesting to.
And actually, David, along, usually, I think, I think every school he's visited to go over this, a board member has also participated to weigh in as well. And, and we've asked teachers to provide input, much like the forums that, that we had available on March 22nd and that we will hopefully get before we leave today, to, to weigh in. When I was there, there wasn't anybody offering, I went to two of them and nobody was immediately offering input, so.
Well, in that, in that vein, I also wondered what the principals thought of it and I don't know if they're allowed to say, but at the March, at the March meeting, you know, the three principals of the element, of all the schools, so all five principals got up and spoke to, I mean, everything sounded glowing, you know, there weren't any, they didn't, it just sounded like a canned, like this is what we were told we had to touch on and so we did and it didn't, I didn't feel like I got any personal information about how they would feel about moving fifth grade to the middle school or shutting down their elementary school, you know, like.
Yeah, like they all had, they all had to speak that they were in support of, you know, that we're as a group, we're, we're together on this, this change, even though maybe.
But at the same time.
When it comes to the heart of the matter, there's also a lot of pride in each school.
Right.
So if you were to be able to take down all of that systems kind of, you know, meetings behind closed doors and say, what do you really think about your school? It's like they have to look at the big vision, but it seems like they also had to stand and say, we're all in this together, which.
Right.
Like as a community member, I think, I noticed that too. Like here you are presenting what a great school you have and we do have great schools and no one's complaining about these small schools with great records. So, so then, then at the same time that they presented that, then they also said, but we're all for, you know, doing this and that, it seemed awkward.
Well, I guess, just, I'll, I'll throw a couple of comments out there, if Mark wishes to, he certainly can weigh in anytime on, but, one is that, yeah, it was interesting that that March 22nd meeting, I hadn't seen that part of the presentation, that all of our schools are great, but this is an exercise, we're looking at 10, 20 years et cetera in the future. And, and I think it's trying to evaluate where education's going and having the additional flexibility, trying to do things such as, I'm going to get blowback on this statement, but then I'll follow, like having world languages and such, I know there's other ways to have world languages at the school, you know, even if you have three schools, but, but having a more enriching environment, having what they call maker spaces and such, and, so this is kind of, we're trying to look into the future. So that's, so you can think the school is terrific now, but, and it's tough to do, you know, frankly, I mean, you know, looking 10, 20 years now. 10 years ago, I was working in an office in DC, I had no idea I would be in Vermont, you know, so. So it's, so I mean, it's like, so that, that's kind of one of the things. And, and the administrators, as I understand it, and Mark can tell me if I'm wrong about this, they did it, they went through a process looking at various factors from the MTSS system, which I can't remember what, multi-tiered systems of support, and looked at different educational and coordination and values and had essentially a survey that was provided, providing input to David Young and Sasha, and this is kind of the result of that process. So, I mean, I don't.
So you're saying the administrators gave individual feedback on possible consolidation via a survey to David Young?
Well, what we mean, we've got a survey that we do. I was just, I'm not a top representative of the official district chair. So.
Well, one, I just wanted to say, what seems to be missing in this discussion to me is how the success of City Center and the success of the school system are very interdependent, especially in terms of generating new business and, and tax revenues. The penny on the sales tax is dedicated to property tax reduction and, so I'm most troubled by not, I, I, and I also think City Center needs to be more than residential and small shops, so I'd really like to see the Marcon School property made available for the arena.
Oh, I see.
Talked about. I also am very concerned about what's happened in the Chamberlain neighborhood as a result of the airport and feel having a school there would, would be a very positive thing. But my overall thing is, I would like to see, have seen this process look more broadly at how the success of the school contributes to the success of the city in a very, very major way, but vice versa, the success of the city can, really is a major underpinning of the school and the process. I went to a lot of the task force meetings and for whatever reason, it's come out focusing solely on the school, which I don't think is in the best interest of the community in the long run. Because I don't think you can define the best interest of the school separate from the future best interests of the city in terms of economic and residential development.
And I guess, I mean, you know, the, one of the issues though is to get the community to support, let's say, scenario five, or four, you know, scenario four, we're keeping Orchard, let's say, we're building a second school to, for Central and Chamberlain neighborhoods. If we're asking for the educational property tax to pay $25 million for a new school and the purpose of that is to benefit the city, I mean, it's, it seems that.
Oh, and it benefits the schools too, but I mean.
Well, yeah, and, well, I think that the benefits have to, well, there's two things. The benefits certainly primarily, I think, have to come in the education that we're going to advance because it's the education property tax that is paying for it. And I think it's hard to, to, to use the education property tax to essentially subsidize what the city wants to do. I don't think that, I don't know that that's proper, but, but you're right, I agree that the second part of that is you do have to look more holistically and, and see what benefits overall to the city will come from that. Will not only good schools, but a city center bring more families in for enrollment and that, that's definitely positive, but that needs to be spelled out, I mean, we can't just do, in my view, it's tough to just do that on the hope that that will happen. And, and, you know, on the, you know, I think, I don't even know if we're at the point of there's an expectation that that would happen or if there's any kind of evidence that that would happen. And, and that's got to be the city that tells us what those benefits are. So, so that's kind of why we're focusing on.
See, I still see that as a sort of a bifurcated process.
Well, it, but, but I guess.
I reject the idea of what the city wants us to do, I think there should be a coming together and figuring out what.
Sure.
The board on the city council, I guess.
But I guess, I guess the thing is that our, I mean, the school board's purview is, is figuring out how to deliver the excellent education over the next 10 to 20 years and that has to be our focus. And if we don't see the, the sufficient educational benefits from moving to any of these scenarios, it's hard to justify. But I, I don't disagree, I mean, and, and I wish, and I'm hoping for more discussion on that, but, you know, since we started this process, we had the, the city center in zoning process and such, it started with, Central School is going to be this great neighborhood school, we're going to have a neighborhood of multi-use as part of the form-based code system, we're going to have this cool neighborhood school there. It went from there to the offer from Saxon Partners that they were going to put a mall in there and all, bring in all this business and stuff. And now it's this arena, so I'd like to see kind of the dust settle on where the city center concept actually is going. That's to say that if we decide now it's not the appropriate time to sell Central School or to ask the community to support the sale of Central School, that doesn't mean if, once the dust is settling, on really where the city's going, because it's just a feasibility study even right now for the arena, that, that, we're not foreclosing the proper time down the road from doing that, is my view. But I do agree, and I guess I would, you know, if people have input on that component of it as far as the broader, looking beyond just the educational benefits, I mean, what are your folks' view of, of that?
I have some input on that. I think you're right, in an ideal world, this would be something that's planned holistically where we say, hey, this is going to benefit the city, here's how it's going to benefit the city, and here's how it's going to benefit the education system. I don't think we have good history of making that work up. We've built a community housing in the city over the last 10, 15 years that have very definitely affected education here around enrollment trends, around diversity in schools, around educational needs in schools, around cost per pupil, and we've not done anything as far as I'm aware to make holistic budgeting decisions there. Like this, that benefited the city, impacted the schools and we made the budget work. There's been none of that connection, there's none of that 65-degree planning. And I think it was a little unfortunate, the joint task force thing that sort of started this process, because there was another opportunity to say, hey, let's, let's show how this is a win-win for both the city and the schools. And what came out was focused on the city, there was very little educational material in there around how this makes a better school system. And so I think we're at a point now where the schools need to say, hey, we need to make some school-based decisions. And if we can see a clear road to how this city center improvement also increase our education, I think the schools would support it, I think the residents would support it. But we haven't even heard that. And so I think, you know, right now, we're sort of looking at this through a, a screen event, which I think is important. And I think it actually brings us to sort of where we are in the process, like, you know, we're sort of saying, you know, we've got to go back to the, go back to the well and sort of look and see what the operating cost savings are and it's sort of like, it sort of feels like, hey, you know, any proposal that's taken this much community bandwidth, school board bandwidth, administrator bandwidth, should be a really strong proposal before all this time is spent on it, because my view just personally is, you know, there's a lot of, there are a lot of priorities, like it's tough, these guys, the school board, the administrators, the teachers, they have a really tough challenge to get all these kids prepared for the world these days. And we're spending so much time on this and I'm wondering like, what are the incremental improvements we're not making? You know, like I, I don't think we're talking enough about, you know, how do we really get sort of quantifiable reports on how we're doing the schools and where we actually need to spend more time and what are some of the programming initiatives that we should be talking about that we'd like to do that we can't do? So, you know, to me, it sort of feels like that's where we, where we are, you know, we're sort of spending more time on this thing that doesn't actually have a whole lot of really, really solid value that's clear. Like I haven't seen anything that says, hey, you know what, the data suggests that a really large elementary school is going to provide a better educational experience. Or the data says that the operating cost savings that we're going to generate here are going to enable us to do this, this and this from a program perspective over the next 10 years. I haven't seen that. I haven't, I haven't seen the thing that says, hey, you know what, from a property value standpoint, people are looking for a larger 21st century education facility, they don't want neighborhood schools, and this is going to increase our property values. I haven't seen that. And so, you know, it's like, I'm open, I'm open-minded, but I have yet to see sort of the firm data and arguments that support making, you know, some of these bigger.
Yeah, I would say that, that was my thought throughout this process too, like in nowhere in any scenario do I have a sense of which one's better for the kids, like where are they, which scenario is going to allow them to foster and to grow and to sort of be ready for the 21st century? I have no idea by looking at those scenarios because of that reason, like we don't have any, we don't have any data to support it, we don't exactly, we don't know how that would affect programming, which programs would be able to add, what, how could we change the way we deliver the programs? So to me, it's hard to even comment because I don't really have a good sense of.
Let's see if I actually, there's, oh, okay, I'm sorry. We did, we did have.
And I mentioned like the world languages, that's one example, right? But it's one of many, many programs that are offered around the district.
Trying to see if we have that. Let's see, I apologize, these are the cost scenarios, just pass those around.
Well, in that regard, you know, if we, we build scenario five with the idea that it enables more programming, but then we don't have the money to do it because we built this new school, then it sort of, like you can't be guaranteed that they're going to implement the programs that they say that they will.
And just having a new building doesn't actually change, doesn't change the way education is.
I feel like we're going about it backwards, like I feel like we need to sit down as a community and say, what do we want our kids to have? Like what are the programs that we want them to have? What are we missing? What are we doing well? Okay, how do we, now that we know as a community what they have, what we want, what are we going to do, how are we going to build our school system around that? Rather than like build a building and try to make us fit in it? That doesn't seem to be going about it the right way.
So, so I mean, the administration did do, and I, I'm sorry that it wasn't included in this packet, and ignore the numbers down here for now, but they, they did a. But they, they, they did a survey, or, this is, this is, these are the issues that they looked at, and they tried to evaluate for each. The academic excellence and consistency, uh, the various opportunities that they could have, uh, the access to additional programming, uh, and the like, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion, uh-
Those are all general terms, though.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, no, you're right, and that's why, we did see some of this earlier on before this was presented, and that's why we have the community that we're really trying to dig down behind that, to make, you know, cause the administration is fairly convinced, though open as well, as far as, you know, the scenario four or five being the best for long term. And, and we wanna make sure, you know, that we fully understand that, and I don't understand it, I don't think the board fully understands it yet, uh, you know, and I, I did mention in a previous school board, you know, the way that we function as a board is that, you know, we just set policy, and we, we hire the experts, and we defer to them, but, you know, there's an, there has to be the evidence and support and, and rationale behind recommendations that we hear, and we have to make sure we understand that there is the, you know, we, we may disagree, you know, we may ultimately disagree on, on what is the best educational output, but we defer, we'll defer to them if they have fully supported that. That doesn't mean that we're gonna say that we still think that the community will support twenty-five million dollars for a new school, given these educational benefits. Uh, but, but, so that's, I mean, that's kind of part of the reason why we are digging down more deeply, because I don't think we have seen the rationale or evidence sufficiently yet, uh, to, to really understand. That's why I mentioned earlier, we also wanna make sure we're not missing an opportunity just because we're not understanding it like our experts are. So, that's kind of why, why we're, we're digging down. And, and you're right, I mean, it's, I, you have the same impression, we're not getting any other secret information, you know, it's been a very public process, so, um, so there is that. Um, but I wanna get back, I had one other point to make for you, to, to your question, uh, as far as the administrators and such, is that, you know, two of the administrators, including Holly Ruel, were on the task force and, and were fully, uh, engaged in, in, in dealing with this, and, and thought that these were the options for going forward. I think part of our process of our, of our subcommittee is after we dig into various materials over the next few weeks until school's over, is afterwards, we'll sit down with Holly and Patrick Burke, who are on the task force, to really make sure we understand. And that's, that's the main thing, is that we don't understand the benefits yet, and we wanna fully understand before we make a final recommendation, because we want, because we're gonna have to make you understand it as well. You know, all of you are gonna need to fully understand, uh, what those benefits are. And, and they're not articulated sufficiently yet.
And we're talking about a huge, huge upfront investment. You know, like, and I come from the business world, and the whole mantra right now in the business world is test and learn. You know, like, get something out there, iterate it, make sure it works, and then put the dollars behind it. And this is like the reverse, right? We're making a one-in-fifty-year decision around school configuration and build-out. We wanna have that pretty earned right-
Right.
By the time we decide to do that.
Right.
And I would, I would say, you know, to your point, it is actually, it's really-
Figure out what it's gonna look like ten years from now, twenty years from now. How do you make the case on the 21st century learning piece? You're still in your earlier doctor's zone. There's gonna be a lot of districts that learn a lot of things over the next five years, seven years, about facilities required for 21st century learning. And I'd say, you know, if we're gonna do this once every fifty years, if we don't have to do it right now, like, let's do it seventy years from now, when we know more, when we have better evidence and data, you know?
Can I jump in? Please, please. I know, I'm thinking for the bottom of the order. Please. Okay. We love this guy, by the way. He's an awesome principal.
Is this being recorded, cause maybe we need to turn the mic over?
Okay.
Thank you. So, I guess I just wanna encourage the, and, and I think people have been asking, well, what are the principals' support? And I think we just wanna say, we support moving forward with the discussion. And I think that if we just put out a presentation and saying, we're doing opposite scenario this, everyone's gonna say, we didn't get feedback. So I think, in a way, this is the beginning, or a reboot of the beginning, of getting people's feedback. So, I support all of them, so, you know, I'm just gonna say that, for a couple reasons. Orchard is over fifty years old, and it's, I, I love this place, I live here, and, but it's tired, it's a tired building. And, you know, we're just trying, like, we're just trying to get the parking, not the parking lot, the entrance page this summer, you know? That's how we're competing with the other schools for those resources. High school has a big need with windows, so, that's like a sponge right now, which we totally support. But, this building is getting tired. The second thing is, I wanna say is, what we should've done better at the high school presentation, is we were really supposed to talk about our, some characteristics, but also identify our differences also. We didn't do a good enough job with that, because the students that qualify for free lunches at Chamberlain is over double what it is at Central, right? And the trend is continuing in that way. Orchard has English language learners, we have more than all the other schools combined, right? And we're, we're going in that way. So, there's a disparity, when, when you talked about the qualifiers here, yeah, that's about that equity piece, is that we need, we need, we need to have all of our kids together in that way. And we have to, we have to remember that piece, cause-
Why, why do they all have to be together because of that? I don't understand.
I just would say-
Is it pooling resources? Is that what it's called?
Pooling resources is part of that, but also your community looks different in each school. It really does. So, I mean, I just, I just wanna explore that, and we could say it looks different, but, I mean, we could just explore that, it might not be harmful, but I think we gotta be open to seeing what the effects of three, more and more distinct schools look like. They're more and more distinct.
I, I think I, I would agree with that, I mean-
Just one more, two more points after that, but, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, the other thing I wanna say then also, is that we do struggle for resources. And right now, you know, there was a very challenge, difficult decisions to be made at the last board meeting, um, I couldn't make it, I was at a college run, but, um, about adding FTE, more teachers to the district. And, and we, Orchard was not in that prime position anyway, but we're gonna have classrooms with big numbers next year, a couple of classrooms are gonna be very big.
Instead of being able to shuffle-
Instead of able to shuffle, right? Unless we all of a sudden wanna say, we're like, we're going to saying, U-ten, we don't have room for here, you're going to this school to make that happen, right? And I think we're trying to avoid that kind of, uh, big city fear, right? We want, and redistricting is a really, I mean, re-communit, you know, is a huge thing, right? That's, I don't think you wanna jump that with, you know, very carefully, I'd be going to that. So, so, that's, those are the things that I, I would really like to support here in the conversation. So, um, and I, I, I think also, wow, I think I said it anyway, Carrie, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I was just thinking, I hadn't, I mean, the idea around the, the differences in the school is really important to think about, because they all do come together at some point, and it is really important that they, that they're getting equitable experiences, and also that they are able to share, sort of, they're able to work together and develop as a community, right? That they're not so segregated, where it's like, I'm an Orchard student, you know, I feel like it's really important that they have that experience together, and I hadn't actually thought about that before, that by making, you know, one school, they all have access to those same resources, and they-
But from the perspective of homogeneousness isn't necessarily the best thing, and they do all come together at some point, and having their unique experiences can help make that a richer environment, you know what I mean? And I don't know, I haven't, I don't have anybody in the-
Though aren't they more heterogeneous if you mix them together?
They come together in the middle school, and they're, you know, to be honest with you, this is just, I'm not speaking from like, a research point of view, or like, I, I do work at the middle school, but I don't feel like I know the middle school as well as other people. I feel like, I feel like to the kids, it doesn't matter that they came from different schools. I, I mean, from what I, you know, they all know they've come from different schools, but it's like, you're always, um, gonna have transitions in your schooling life, so you're gonna, you know, there's a good time to have a transition in your life. Is middle school a good time to have that transition? Yes, they're ready for that. They're like, they're ready for something new, they're ready to grow their cohort, right? Socially or developmentally. I don't feel like the kids have a problem with that. And I do feel like, um, I do feel like sometimes I hear a lot in the district about the inequity of, you know, and not that one school is better than the other, but I just wonder, I personally wonder if that's more about programming and sharing resources, and, you know, and maybe it would be easier to do that.
With a bigger school?
Yes. If, if we did it together, because, um, so that, those are the kind of things that, um, you know, teachers and maybe administrators talk about, but kids do not talk about. So, kids do not, kids, kids don't-
Well, so what I wonder from this-
But it's like taking a perspective, um, from like, you know, are, is everyone getting what they need, um, as far as, you know, as our resources go? I, I go on both sides, cause I also worry about transitions. So, I worry about, so as a parent, I worry about, um, how many times are our kids going to transition through schools? Um, so when I look at these, I wear like different hats. When I look at these, I really am concerned about pre-K to three to five, six to eight. I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I don't, I do, and that's as a parent.
Right.
Um, I just, I really worry about transitions, and I worry about them more when we talk about equity, because I think the kids who have services, or who have higher needs, they're the ones that suffer the most in that situation. So, our kids, so our kids who do well in school, they do fine, they accommodate, they, they do great, you know, they're going to be successful, no matter where they land. And our kids who receive services do not do well in that situation. So, I really, so when I look at the pros and cons, that's a big one for me.
And what's the research behind that? I mean, I know some schools in the area do this model, so like, is there research to suggest that a model like this would be better than a model where students go through less transitions? I mean, why was this proposed in the first place, I guess? What was, what brought that to the table?
Do you wanna talk about option four?
Well, I don't know about the research, I don't, unfortunately, but the, um, the concept was to have all of the cohort together, so that the teachers could cooperate and work together as a team, and, and that leads to better classroom experiences, better teaching, is my understanding, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, and, and also back to that diversity issue. So, that's what's on one end of the scale versus-
They're all planning at the K-2 level.
But you could accomplish that same thing in two different parts of the same school.
Yes, they do it now, they do it now, and they do it successfully with planning time and support, and lots of, so, we get lots.
I don't, oh, go ahead, no.
I don't feel the central purpose should be to achieve a certain kind of social end via the school system. To mix up different people as early as possible, it might be a social ideal, but I don't think it's an education ideal, or a worthy objection, objection. I think the small children, most research, and I have been studying this for a long time, having gone through some major school issues in Syracuse suburbs, which are racked by school closings, but for years on end. Most research shows that small children thrive in small settings, where they are making a transition from their home and family and neighborhood into a, what to them is a large place. If they've just been in a pre-K or in their family, then coming to a place like this is already large. So, I think the achievement of the mixture is irrelevant at that level. Already the Burlington, South Burlington is, uh, is fairly diverse in some of the populations in the neighborhoods, and I believe that a building, a huge building would be counterproductive and really unfortunate. Teachers don't necessarily like each other better in large schools. They don't. They might like each other less.
Nor do they necessarily see each other that much. I mean, I work in a large school, right? Like, I work with the same six people every day, and there's people I don't see, you know, so that, just cause you're in a big school doesn't mean that you're all gonna work collaboratively. Yeah, what I-
I think the college research shows that many of the small colleges produce more scientists, and more researchers, and more PhDs and doctors than the bigger ones, because the one-to-one attention isn't there.
And I, and I think another one of the values that we're moving toward is, is making learning more personalized, and I think that's easier to do in a small school setting.
I mean, there is, there is a possibility of taking large schools and making it feel like a small community, right? So, that, that's certainly possible.
Yeah, I, I feel like the system we have now with the, with the community, neighborhood schools, you know, where they come together at the middle school level, at that point, they've had the six years to develop their sense of community and their sense of self in a place that's more secure, um, and less, sort of, less overwhelming, you know? The, the, all the schools have different programming, that's true, but they all, um, foster that sense of community, where the kids can recognize by face most of the parents of, of their classmates, which is, you know, giving them that, that sense of identity, I think, is really important as they're going into middle school and sort of being, you know, all put together. Together, they're all stronger, because they're individually more.
But is the programming that different between schools? Or is it just that each school has its own sort of identity, where like Orchard does a play, and those things are different than programs?
We have more-
Oh, okay. I feel like, I don't know.
So, what, what's the definition of the programming?
Of what?
The programming is what, what the school-
It's not like one school gets a language and the other one doesn't, or something.
Following the same curriculum, now, the same curriculum, the same, it, it's where the differences are, and, and it's, it's perhaps parent involvement, it's perhaps, you know, the English language learners, the free and reduced lunch, but as far, as far as, you know, when I say parent involvement, that's not necessarily a school-by-school thing, as it is almost a cohort thing. Cause I, for instance, at, at Central School, uh, for a couple of the grades, there were parents there all the time, very, very involved, but there were a couple of grades that they weren't.
Right.
And so, I mean, that shifts among all three schools, so-
So, so you don't count, that's not called programming, with the, with the play and-
That's not really, no, it's the overall school experience.
Okay, alright.
It's enrichment, though.
It's not like one school gets to have a world language and the other one doesn't, like, that would be not believable.
That was one of the Iowa's from the high school, yeah? Is everyone in high school?
No.
One of the interesting things about the high school meeting, I just saw this topic, was, gave it to you after the principals of the different schools, to talk about their schools, and the culture of their school, and the greatness of their school. I think it was sort of like, hoping to sort of show, hey, like, these schools are really different, and we need, we need to like, make sure everyone has some access to, to the same great stuff. But what actually came out was, at the end of that ten minutes, you were just like, wow.
They're all great schools.
These are fantastic schools, they all have leaders-
Four minutes, four minutes.
They all have leaders who care, who know the community, who make it great. I mean, that was like, far and away, it takes-
Yeah.
And, and then you start to think, well, why are people away from that? You know, like, you know, like, we, we have, we have these themes, I really appreciate those points, Mark, about like, they're tired buildings, and, you know, the crop size issue and things like that. And that's why I think, like, if we're gonna make any big decisions, we should be able to look at it a little bit more, um, a little bit more quantitatively, and a little bit more holistically. Like, it's really hard to have a facilities discussion without having a programming discussion. Because if you have a programming discussion, then you can say, hey, you know, uh, with the money that we're asking the community for this facility, we could actually make another FTE in each school, you know, for fifteen years, or whatever. And then you can start to say, hey, you know what, scenario two is actually something we should do, because it allows us to sort of, in a sustainable way, have the best of hope. But right now, we just, we don't have that, we don't have that information either, we don't, we're not, we don't have the information to make the decision.
And that's how you get the support, is like, people can understand, can weigh those, here are the consequences, here's what we're gonna, yeah, here's what we're going to get out of this change, you know?
Exactly. Can I just mention, though, we talk about the equity and the programming, I guess it's unfortunate Holly's not here, the principal at Chamberlain. And I think she would, you know, say it differently, oh, we'd wanna, but if every third child that comes from a home of poverty, or at least qualifies for free and reduced, that can, that's going to be a little bit different than us, who are one in four, five, or so, or greater than at Central. So, like, that part is, and the other point I wanted to make real quick, is that, is that these are just ideas for the, you know, some ideas for the future. But, the other thing is, I think we gotta think about, is Chamberlain closes. You know, I was there the other day, and I almost ducked. You know, the planes were coming by, and it was, and I went inside, tried to make a joke, like, wait, the F-35s are here? Cause it was so loud. Cause it was so loud.
Those are F-16s.
Yeah, yeah, those are F-16s. And they, and thankfully they were one after the other, so there was like two minutes rather than, it was, I think everybody in the building's used to it. I, just, just showing up at that time, I was like, wow, this is pretty loud. So I, I'm, I'm wondering about how smaller and smaller Chamberlain's going to become. I'm also wondering about what happens when the, there, if the central neighborhoods, I mean, we say it could be cool to have a school in city center, but it might not also. So I think we ought to think ahead too and not, and not say, let's not, you know, think about any of these because I, I think we'd all would agree, we should try to control the future rather than controlling us.
And you mentioned redistricting and, and it was like a really scary topic, but isn't that.
Thankfully I wasn't here for that, sorry.
Isn't that part of the conversation though is like, you know, so think about how Chamberlain is going to be impact, impacted by the noise, you know, and think about how Rick Marcott may be impacted by the growth of a city center. And maybe it is time to look at how we draw our lines in South Burlington. And, and that could also get me to a place where I'm okay with two schools, you know, because someone says, we're going to be losing, no one wants, you know, no one wants to live in these neighborhoods. It's not, I wouldn't want my, you know, the noise, you know, the noise for the children, you know, is it harmful to them? Those conversations, you know? So I also have to say that I was shocked to hear, you know, that Rick Marcott was on the table, you know, that whole, the wave was all delivered, but we don't, you don't have to look back, you just look forward. But like Rick Marcott was on the table as to be closed, Chamberlain was not, and the, the way we're going to make those decisions just doesn't seem right to me. And, and I agree with, you know, tie, tying together the city and the schools is important, but as a, um, community member, there's things I care about, but having a, a downtown that looks like Williston, I do not care about that, like zero. I care about my schools, um, I care about things that bring our community together. I do not, you know, so, so really tying those two things together, I can't say, yes, I want to close the school to create, um, and I'm not a business, you can already tell, I don't have the business mind, but like I don't want a bunch of stores to go to. That's not why I live here. You know, I want community, I want, um, my kids to be able to walk to school, I want to be, and, and I understand there's an economic piece to it, but I'm not ready to like close Rick Marcott to bring in shopping centers.
As far as, it, it was presented, the, the task force started at a point when there was a proposal that people, whether there was a school in the mix or not, a lot of people I talked to were opposed to, you know, a big box store. And it was particularly galling, you know, replacing school on the ground. So that was, so, so as far as understanding how central school could fit in, uh, or that property could fit in, I, I, I think we have to see from the city, actual plan that people can be willing to give up the school for. I mean, that, and that's not there. I don't know how many people are excited about replacing U, uh, with the UVM arena. I just haven't heard as, as much about that. But, but I guess, I want to focus on, on two of the options, or I have some, a couple of questions for you all. The option four, if we built a new school, well, let me actually start with option three. Uh, if you have a central school and, and Orchard, and, and so Chamberlain would be closed and we would, but to do that, to make that work, the fifth grade would have to go in those schools. So what's your viewpoint?
So I, I don't want to belabor the earlier point, but I feel like if we're going to talk about any changes to any of these schools, the, the bottom line has to be the quality of education for the kids and we're not, there's no data that's showing us, uh, a research that says definitively, here's what we get, here's why this is going to be better, especially as, as we move forward and making significant investment. And if, and if we don't know that it's going to be better, then why would we make any change whatsoever when, you know, the, the kids are the ones who get put at risk? And, you know, it mostly, especially going back to the initial conversation I heard about this, which was a presentation by David at Rick Marcott. It feels like a lot of fluff and no substance. You know, at that time it was to, to talk about, uh, Rick Marcott going away in favor of city center, et cetera, et cetera. And there's, there's been nothing, there's been no good, uh, education of the public. It sounds like even you feel like you don't have all the data that you wish you had. Um, that is going to ever make me feel comfortable getting excited about a change at all because Rick Marcott today, and I'm sure your families would say this about your school, is a wonderful place. And, um, you know, your kids went there, you know that as well. And so why, why would we give up something wonderful for something we don't even know is the quality of? And, and the, for me, the conversation stops there.
Well, I guess, and, and what I'm focusing on is, is the option three where Chamberlain's closed because we know the odds are much better that there will be an educational improvement if the kids aren't going to Chamberlain because of the increasing noise.
But what are the benefits of moving fifth graders to the middle school then?
Hold on, even, even with that, I, I think, go back to data, go back to research, you know?
Well, I mean.
What, what is showing us that that's an informed decision, you know, for any change whatsoever?
Well, we are looking, uh, and working towards getting more of a, um, sound standards for inside schools, which surprisingly there isn't in the state of Vermont. Uh, you know, noise standards and, and, and may get some sort of consultant to really understand. I mean, it's more anecdotal from the teachers, what, you know, the students are learning there is they have to stop talking for 15 to 45 seconds, but that's just for your standards to do. You also hear that there are kids who are terrified, you know, who are, they're developed, you know, there's kids that have some behavior development, you know, issues as well, are really negatively affected by that. So, so that, that's something we're looking at further and that may be, that may, and it's not definitive because there's a lot of positives to Chamberlain being there as, as well. It's a, I've heard a lot of people say it's like kind of a hub of a neighborhood. Um, but that one might be the clearest, you know, as far as the educational benefits just because of the environment, environment.
Right, but the benefit's clear for the why you would close Chamberlain, but I'm not sure the benefit's clear as why the fifth graders would move to the middle school. Like what's the, is that just because of space?
It's a space issue.
It's just a space issue. So what's the impact on learning and for kids?
Most of the research shows that fifth grade move to the middle school is not a good solution. And the Jamesville, the Whitt School system outside Syracuse, that school closes, we carried out, put the fifth grade in the middle school and it was a very bad result. The fifth grade was not, children were not thriving there. They had to reorganize the architecture of the building and put fifth grade all in one wing because there are a lot of differences between a nine-year-old and an eighth-grade boy who was intimidating, the doors are big, the whole thing was not successful. And I believe from my reading of this, that much research supports the idea that fifth grade is an elementary school age, not a middle school.
What if we expanded the size of Orchard and Marcott in order to accommodate?
I mean, that, I mean, that, that's another option. And, and Gene, I, I guess, having heard from our middle school, uh, administrators and such, they certainly don't take the same view as you expressed certainly. And they do take the same view that you can't have fifth grade mixing with eighth grade, but they also say that the sixth graders are kind of isolated in the middle school because the sixth graders seem to be very different than the seventh and eighth graders. The seventh and eighth graders.
It's not just that, it's a program. So like it's a, a looping program in seven, eight, and the sixth grade stands alone.
And they're, they're talking about a looping program for five, six. Uh, I, I think that maybe, maybe we're not tonight and maybe we're not going to get there, but I think that I can be convinced that that kind of move, if you do it right, uh, it can be beneficial.
I think it's a premature transition. It's a, putting a lot of pressure on children who are just thrive, beginning to thrive in elementary school and would be much better suited to a move. Now, I don't know, the administrators who conduct these things often think they're successful. The private parochial schools nearby know that they are not because there's an influx. When these things are implemented, everyone says our goals are the same, but they are not capable of achieving them in such a setting. And that's my view. I think also we have too much concern in this country about buildings are tired. And I have grandchildren living in Toronto and they go to a building that was completed in 1923. And they have excellent programs, so they have diverse school population, they have activities, they have foreign language immersion, they have everything. A building is not what provides education. And if we commit in Vermont to this kind of construction costs that are incurred, the people will be paid and the children will be paid.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead. Oh, no, I just want to thank her for that comment. I think that was great. I will say all three of my children went through a five, eight and they're doing pretty well.
I was just going to come, like, cause it was Williston, right? So Williston has a similar program.
Chittin East and also Chittin and South also have five eights. And if you put, I think if you front, and, and they have houses of five eights and then they disperse into more curricular appropriate, right?
So just tying these two things together, back to your question about option number three, we actually spent a lot of time on should we move the fifth grade to middle school, uh, I think it was three or four years ago.
Before this.
Two and three years ago.
Yeah.
Because we were looking at that issue in and of itself. Um, and again, nobody was able to show us the data that said there was a better educational outcome. And so if we said, hey, if we can't prove that there's a better educational outcome, why would we compromise on a lot of the things we love about these beauty schools today? And that's as far as I understand where that conversation landed. We now have a new piece driving this question, which is, hey, if we've got a, if we've got an educational environment that's not providing equal education to kids in one of the schools, we need to do something about it. And, and actually, to be honest with you, the last two's been interesting for me because I, I pretty much after the task force made their recommendation, my personal view was, hey, you know what? The task force said, you know what, kids at Chamberlain aren't getting equal opportunities. We need to move them to the two other elementary schools, we need to move the fifth grade to middle school. I'd have been in support, no questions asked. To your point, Mark, it's very important that everyone gets good, solid education. And that's kind of what I was thinking. I, I, in the last six weeks since this process started at the high school, I've had a dialogue with an older woman in the, in the Chamberlain neighborhood whose son is a great friend of mine. And she hadn't been that involved in the process. And I was like, and she was really opposed to closing Chamberlain. And I said, you know, go to those meetings and listen carefully about sort of the equal opportunities because I think that you're going to find that Chamberlain's not providing equal opportunity for those schools. And I get an email from her every day, every day, about how great Chamberlain is and who she's talked to, whether it's administrators, teachers, residents, students. And she's pretty much like made me pro, like, and I didn't even suggest we should close the school, but it just, it just made me realize like I had some preconceived notions about Chamberlain and want only the best for those kids. But when push comes to shove, I actually think we need to look a little further to say, all right, what's the neighborhood want? And the one outstanding issue is the noise. Like I think there's no, I, I don't think that we've proven any educational inequities, but there's a noise.
Right, there's the teachers, well, the, the, the problem with Chamberlain, I mean, part of the problem is that it's getting small, they only have two teachers per grade, although we just add a third kindergarten teacher. And that, that's what that interaction of teachers, if you just have two, that's, you don't, yeah, you don't have a team, two, I guess it could be, but, um, so that, that's one issue. And I guess that gets to the redistricting question. And that's, that came up a lot in Chamberlain, but boy, redistricting is tough. And I, I'd be willing to do that, but if I'm, I'm telling, you tell me if, if I was telling you parents that you're going to need to send your kids to Chamberlain and all you've heard about is the noise problem. I mean, this is, it would be even more difficult because Chamberlain's in a difficult situation out with the noise.
I wasn't really envisioning. I was envisioning if, if, I know what you're saying, to send, to, to say, to equal out the numbers, we're going to send people to this school that we think has environmental issues.
It could be equal to empty, or I mean, the diversity issue.
I was saying, what if you look at the map of how we do the districting, once we have the schools that we've decided are the schools to stay, which in my head was not Chamberlain because of the environmental issues. If you're doing new build or whatever, then that is an opportunity to redistrict. And then you can look at, um, you could look at neighborhoods and, you know, you can have a chance to redistrict without it being that kind of situation, without it being.
Is it because of school choice? I mean, is it low because of the school choice numbers?
The reason the moan of it was because of the school choice.
So isn't that.
Going to change?
Yeah, isn't that going to change?
I would think, so I, I don't know exactly the demographics of where the kids are coming from. I mean, they're, they have a much bigger, uh, kindergarten class than they had the last couple of years, is my understanding. I think everybody has, uh, bigger, so.
But the districts, so the districts for the three schools are.
A little weird.
Yeah.
But, but I think, I don't think.
Like Chamberlain's way down on the east side of the city.
Goes all the way down to the.
Yes.
The secondary road, deep water drive.
Yes.
So it's can be, yeah, it can be quite.
Well, to point out one thing, you just said that all the kindergarteners, all the kindergarten classes next year are high. One of David's primary points has been to consolidate to one school has been our population's going to decrease. And I know we're just talking about one year, but I feel like that's way off base.
But that, that's what the demographers have been telling us and, and it could be just a fluke or is everybody moving to South Burlington with families, you know?
Cause that's really a big roll across.
Did Mark first get the memo?
Yeah.
We have like 60% one or two percent. They're not all moms with one kid or dads with one kid.
I just think that wasn't, it wasn't comprehensive for the demography study, didn't include all that. Like when, even when we talked about city center with the task force, they didn't say, hey, uh, yeah, if we move forward with city center, we're going to build this many units and here's how that's plugged into the demography study.
Right, right. They don't, right.
Right, they're more hosing.
There's a lot more that could be done to assess the future of the community than what was in that demography report. If you talk to companies that are selling baby products, if you've talked to grocery stores, they have a profile of what they're expecting. And they have made their own projections and there's more population growth here. There's more activity in and out of stores and shops here. And in our school district, I wonder, having this issue, we dealt with the diaper service companies that existed in that period of time. And they, their results put the school district into total shame and disgrace. And their, their figures were the ones that were borne out. You can take an actual census here and you could go around and interview, I'm not able to do that at this point in my life, but one time, at one time I did. And I think if you really start to look at communities and what happened if you closed, say this school, what would happen to the attractiveness of this nice neighborhood around it as far as drawing children? These things are interdependent.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's true.
Can I jump to a totally different point about, I, there's something I want to say just about when I look down the line, you know, 15, 20 years, you know, how do we think education might change and how do we want our spaces to look for, um, for our students? And I know this comes up sometimes, but not all the time, but, you know, I'm, I'm pretty concerned about, about the high school. I'm pretty concerned about the middle school. Um, I, I work in the middle school and, and the flexible spaces, um, aren't there. And I think that, um, curriculum is changing and we are talking about ways that we can get kids to do more choice projects. And I know that in the community, when I talk to parents and I hear what they want their schools to look like, you know, there's a lot of this. There's like, parents are really involved in their kids' educations. They don't, they don't want schools to look the way schools look now. They don't, they're not looking for traditional schools. They're looking for schools that offer choice. They're looking for schools that offer.
Even middle school, high school or, or all schools?
I, I, especially in the middle school and the high school is this like flexible spaces, you know, looking for ways for kids to break out, for kids to do projects, for, um, you know, learning looks really different and students, um, are moving around, they're, you know, they're getting together with this group, they're getting together with that group. I would love to, you know, see it in elementary school too, um, but there's, there's other things that are going on, you know, about like outdoor education, art education. There's a lot of things going on in our community that aren't happening in our schools that I think our parents of the future want. So I just want to also say that. So I just want to also say that, when we're thinking about this, I have great concerns about the high school and the middle school, you know, and maybe the elementary school, too. I'm not, I don't, I'm not as well-versed in, like, the philosophy of early ed, you know, but I, I do worry a little bit about our spaces being ready for that, for that kind of learning. And when I think about the fifth grade going to the middle school, you know, I walk around in that building all the time, and I say, do I want my fifth grader to come into this building and join the sixth graders? Right now, I don't, because I don't, I, I look at it, and it, it is, there are no windows. It doesn't, you know, like, when you send your kid to school, and you come in, and you see what the teacher has done with the classroom, and how they inspire their kids to learn and everything, right now, I'm not ready for the fifth grade to come, because the middle school's not, it's not ready. And I, I don't say that in a negative way, I work there, the teachers are great, but structurally, it's not ready, you know? And philosophy-wise, there, there are amazing five-through-eight programs. I, I would, before I'd be ready, be like, yeah, bring the fifth grade on. I would want to see, you know, how are we, how are we gonna change our middle school, how are we gonna change our high school, before we take our kids out of these successful nurturing, they're doing great in elementary school, they're, they have teachers that are working with what they have, you know, there's great, they, they feel like they should as fifth graders. Now you're gonna move them into the middle school, and I, I just worry about the space and that middle school model, like, really being, and same with the high school, I just want it to be ready, I don't want to say, move it, let's just stick them in there, because we have space.
Right.
So it's, it's, there's an opportunity cost involved in all this as well. I mean, to the extent we ask the community for twenty-five million dollars, thirty-five million dollars for a new school, is there still the capacity in the community to then come up with twenty million dollars for upgrades that probably are gonna get us more educational bang for the buck at the high school and get us, and that's one of the other opportunity costs. And kind of going broadly to the, to the city as well, hey, does, does the community have the capacity to vote for a case seventy percent of the new library, and a new school, and high school and middle school upgrades? I mean, that's kind of, this, this November, I mean, the city's library's going on for some, some, some demands, you know, in part, but not higher, my understanding, for the new library, we're seventy percent.
But let me ask you another question, if we were going to, yeah, yeah.
So to tie that to another topic, the original proposal, I'm, 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 consolidation is very much, is what we're seeing. Right, and then the law of the city, or less density law, there's the planning enrollment and requiring consolidation of districts.
It's requiring consolidation of districts to make things cost-effective. The reality is, we don't look like most Vermont communities. And I think the more we sort of act like most Vermont communities, we're not really doing ourselves justice. So, you know, we all feel really great about the quality of our education, and, Mark, you know how much I love all the educators and the administrators in the system, I really do, I have a ton of respect. But you know what, like, we're spending all this time on the standardized testing, we don't really want to be, we don't feel like the results really tell us anything, but you know what, South Burlington looks pretty good, right? We come, here's how you compare to the rest of Vermont, and, yeah, we're coming in the top seventy-five, eighty percent. The reality is, like, we need to be looking at how we compare to other communities that look like us. And a lot of those communities are out of state. Our kids are not competing with other Vermonters, they're competing with global, you know, they're competing with national. And my sense is, if we were to start to look at our results relative to national, we wouldn't look quite as good as we do here in Vermont. Like, our teams win the state championship all the time, it's great, but, you know, I came from Mass. I don't think my school's ever won a state championship, right? My, my point is, I think if we were focused more on some of the educational opportunities that we have, we would be spending less time talking about this, and we'd be spending more time talking about that. And so I think we're having a big opportunity cost right now. I mean, just in the last five years, school calendar, fifth grade to middle school, now this for two years, what are we not working on here? Like, there's a lot that we're not working on. In, in, in my sort of business background, it's like, you have three key priorities, and you can execute to them, anything else, and it's too much. So I, I just feel like we're missing something here.
Why aren't we doing like a self-study, right? So why aren't we sending teachers to other similar schools, and sending community members to look at what those schools actually look like? And look at the research that they've pulled up, you know, just so that we have some models to work with.
So I think, I think, to, to your point, and your point, is that the, I don't have the depth of information, and we, we don't need it. And I think part of that is, though this is an important thing that we're doing, it in fact is not the priority of the district, or at least most of the district. It's proficiency-based graduation, you know, district administrators are now less so, but yeah, also in the front office, you know, our work on personalized learning plan, Common Core, and the curriculum, and all that stuff is going on, and that is the actual priority, and that may be why we're disappointed with how, in fact, the effort's been put, there hasn't been a number of resources to, to send people out to, to do that, to have some of that, so. That's why we had the task force, and the task force was to try to, but the task force already could go so far, and we could only ask so much of those community members.
So, just, you can just leave it like that, and I can get everybody this way.
These guys have a huge day job, and they're doing a great job, and I really appreciate that.
So, so, I mean, so that's kind of, you know, so I think, I'm not, I'm, I feel, I, yeah, I feel, well, I've been distracted for other reasons the last several months, but, but I think that, that the school board is trying to focus on metrics for monitoring the ends. How are we doing on proficiency-based graduation? All those things are really our focus. Yes, this is very important, and we have to do this, too, but we're trying to make sure that this is not priority number one. We have to, we have the next four years are really critical for implementing, our, our next, our current eighth graders are gonna be the first ones graduating under this whole new regime, and so...
But don't they work in conjunction with each other? I mean, you're talking about, you know, really changing education, and we're talking about moving to proficiency-based standards, we're talking about, you know, personalized learning, all that works in conjunction with changing the model of schools. If we're, if we're pushing up against each other, and we're looking at different, we're not looking at it holistically, then we're not looking at how we can change the way a school is structured to help us work towards the proficiency, and really, you know...
Yeah, I feel that having this issue of school configuration, school closing, construction of new schools, construction of a major elementary school is a great fog over the other priorities, because everyone is aware of it as an issue, and it is, seems an unsettled issue that shouldn't go on indefinitely, because you're talking about visioning for the future, and the future is already passing, since it's been, it's been a year since this report's recommendations were presented. The task force was guided by the initial consultant, Frank Locker, who was an architect of, or original education and training, and is known for designing and creation of new campuses. I've read a lot of his plans, his plans emphasize a subtext of safety also, new schools are safer, that's in this material. And I, I don't feel that all of that has been addressed explicitly and overtly, and I don't feel that the goals are ones that I would support. As I've attended four meetings, I think there's a lot of time, and I've only lived here for fifteen months, I think there's plenty of opportunity for input. What's lacking now, I feel the board members should declare what they stand for, bring the thing to a crux, and decide, these are not matters of absolute research, these are matters of values, and what you think of for your children, your neighborhood, your family, you want to live in a neighborhood which has a cute school, I, we certainly did. And I think it's a great thing for the people who don't have children to see children.
Right.
So I feel the matter should be resolved and brought to the decision point.
Well, I guess, yes, I agree. I believe me, I wish this was behind us. But, having said that, I mean, there, we have to make as good of a decision as we can, and yes, you know, you could probably tell where I lean on all these things, but there are a lot of people in the community who really want this to happen. And so I have to make sure that I've provided, you know, if we decide we're staying with the status quo, or if we're, you know, or if we're closing Chamberlain, and consolidating into two schools and moving to fifth grade, those seem to be like the two most likely options that I, in my mind. We have a lot of explaining to do, still, and, and for a lot of people. Including just the status quo, yeah, everything's lovely, but, but, part of what we're talking about is the high school and middle school as well, and I think the status quo is not appropriate at the, at the middle school and high school. So unfortunately, there's gonna be, it's gonna be a little longer, you know, we're gonna be really rolling up our sleeves, uh, over the next several weeks to try to come, you know, we've gotten the community feedback, we've given the opportunities for people to, to give feedback, so...
Can you explain it to the public if you haven't resolved the issues in your own mind?
I mean, it's more important that we get it right than we get it done.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
How will you be able ever to explain it to the public if the issues are not resolved in your own mind? I look at this, and I find that these are things that, I've had a lot of experience in education, but I don't think this is not exploring a new black hole in the universe. These are things people know about and care about, and have familiarity with.
Right.
And I think that is a basis for reaching a community determination.
Right, you know, that's, I mean, that's, that's true. But I, but I also still need to make sure, as I alluded to earlier, that we're not missing an opportunity, we need to make sure we understand what we're deciding, and we're not quite there yet. We need to dig into some of these things a little more. I, I'm hearing from the community, and, and certainly the people who come to these community meetings, are for the most part in favor of either the status quo, or maybe option two or three. Uh, well, not the status quo, I should say option two, not the status quo, uh, option two or three. But, you know, we need to make sure, there's a lot of people in the community that, we, we also still have some outreach to do, to make sure that we've gotten a cross-section of where the community is. And again, I mean, I can't, you know, I, I think the school board can't just decide by trying to take a poll, or trying to get the measure of just what the community is. We have to, you know, we're elected officials, and we have to decide using all the input we get, and the research we do, and our, you know, our reasoning skills, and talking to each other, and having a debate among ourselves as well, to come up with whatever we think the decision is. Of course, if it's the self-school, we have to convince the community to do that. But, but I, let me get to a detail, again, I had a question on the option number four, that if we were gonna have this school here and a brand-new school, I, what would parents think about, if we were not doing the K through two, I, I understand the transition issue and such, if they both stayed, if there was two K fours or two K fives, however we could put it, how would people feel that, oh, their kid's gonna be, a central school parent? I mean, this, none of this is gonna happen when you're still having kids, unless you're having more. But, I mean, a central school parent, you know, what are they gonna think about the new school versus going to Orchard? The people who are stuck in this old, tired school, which we all love, I, are they gonna be feeling upset that everybody else goes to the nice, safer, new, brand-new school? Or is it more important that it's a neighborhood school?
Um, neighborhood school, I think, yeah.
It'll be envy, school envy, elementary school facility envy?
It'll probably be...
I think it makes more sense to put the money in the high school.
The high school's nice.
Don't build a new school.
I have a point on your last point, though.
There's certain upgrades that we need to make it safe.
I really appreciate, I really appreciate you, as part of the school board, looking for more information to make sure we make the right choice. That's coming through loud and clear, and that feels good. Um, I really also appreciate what you guys have done to make this process more interactive, more transparent, really good. And I appreciate sort of your sentiment of, hey, we want to, like, really continue our diligence here, and we want to reach out and make sure everyone in the community feels good. I think if we spoke more as a school board about the challenges we're having with personalized learning plans, with graduation-based requirements, um, with the resources that we have trying to handle, what, thirty percent English second language, these are, whatever, twenty-five percent, what is it, eighteen, you know, it's twenty a week in some schools, whatever. My, my point is just like, if people are hearing more about the challenges you're having with the money that you have today, I think they're going to be able to balance those decisions and priorities with this. And right now, I feel like a lot of the community's hearing about this sort of in a vacuum, and they're sort of like, well, look, you know, we want to build City Center, why isn't the school cooperating? Well, the school's not cooperating, because the school is like, to the max, trying to provide an education, an education with all these challenges in this little money. And I think if people understand those priorities, it makes it much easier to spend the right amount of time and energy, make a decision on this, and move forward in terms of what's best. That's what I think. And I think, like, as you said, everyone's got a day job to do, and it's a big day job, so if we spend this much of, sort of, you know, excess time around strategy and leadership on these types of things, and not on the other things that are the big priorities, it's just something's getting bumped. Like, we're not spending enough time on personalized learning plans, we're not spending enough time on proficiency-based graduation requirements, we're not spending enough time on housing development and English second language, and what we need to do to account for that, to make sure that we can have a great school here. I think that's where the conversation needs to be. Just my personal opinion.
Correct. And again, I mean, it, it may seem that this is all we're doing. I, this, I mean, very much is not. I mean, uh, this is an issue, obviously, that, that we're dealing with, but, again, not to be redundant, this isn't, this isn't the priority.
It's just getting all the media, like, you look at what people hear about.
Well, this is more exciting. I mean, this is, this is, this is, this is controversial. I mean, the proficiency-based graduation requirements, personalized learning plans, which we, you know, we're marching in step, we're doing well, you know, on, on getting to where we need to be. You know, that's, that's going fine. That's why it's not getting as much attention from out in the community, but the, the reason why it's going fine is because our administration is focusing on that. So, so I'm not so concerned about that. But yes, I, I want to, I want to get to a decision, I think we owe a decision, you know, a decision fairly soon, uh, but...
When you mentioned the scenario you told us to think about, it wasn't Orchard and Marquette, it was Orchard and a Newville.
Uh, that, just a moment ago, yeah, yeah, it was a scenario for, yeah, Orchard and a Newville, and facility envy is what I'm talking about, I mean, are parents gonna be...
I think, to be very honest, I think at first, no, because new things are scary to people, but maybe after a couple of years, it might, that, that type of envy might start to surface.
Then we can change to a K two and three-five.
But you wouldn't, it wouldn't only be a neighborhood school, though, because you would have students coming to Orchard from all over the district, but there was only two.
Well, that is already the case now. I mean, they're coming from Cider Mill, and, and Central's the least neighborhood school of them all. And actually, the place that we've talked about having a new school, has a neighborhood right next door, the, 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 thank you, is that your neighborhood?
I live in Bella Farms, yeah.
Yeah, 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 so I mean, that would be more of a neighborhood school.
More walkable than...
Right, than Central, yeah.
But why is, why is the money, if you had to choose, or maybe it's not a question of having to choose, but if the high school and the middle school need such renovation, why would the money be put into building a new school instead of using it for the middle and the high school? That's the part, I can't wrap my head around that part.
Well, that's exactly why, I mean, I was mentioning, as far as opportunity cost, do we feel that, well, first, we have to decide that, yes, we think the new elementary school is the right way to go, uh, and then, but I think we already are fairly convinced...
One or the other, you can't do both.
Well, no, that's not necessarily the case, that's not necessary. I mean, the way this is, we've been presenting it is as a package with the high school and middle school put together. So I guess the question is, would, would the community approve the, you know, sixty million dollars that we have to spend on both?
But if you had to prioritize, I think that would be something, too.
Right, and there's setting the priorities, certainly, and it would seem that the high school and middle school are, should be the priorities. What's that?
Is there anyone that doesn't agree with that, that the high school and middle school are the priorities for a spend?
I don't think so. I, I've not heard of people making a strong argument that it's a...
That came out of the very, very first informational community meeting way back, which was at the middle school.
Right, right.
And people were blown away that it wasn't on the table, and it came out, and, oh, feedback from the tables, when people said, why isn't this, you know, why isn't this an option? Why isn't the... the, why isn't the high school..."
Was that just a, a new high school or was it just a high school at all?
It was like a 21st century high school, 21st century, century thirty high school.
Now, remember it being said that if the total middle school is to observe the fifth grade, it would have to have construction to it.
Correct.
And this does not make it look like a consolidation to me, it looks like a expansion and a construction project which will be taking place in a context that is not ideal even for the present students with others being crammed in there too, which I think would be a bad thing.
I mean, if we did construction during...
I think the expenditure aspect of construction is much greater than any one of the things. And the dates on construction are frequently not met, so you're taking up years of children's lives with all this digging and bulldozing and our cramming of the buildings up there. It seems a pretty tight fit, I feel to me, when I have been there for a meeting. I, I don't see how that is appealing or the public would find that attractive as kind of school setting I want.
Right, I mean, it, it would all have to be phased appropriately and presumably if this were gonna happen, uh, Chamberlain wouldn't be closed until the middle school would be ready or a new school would be ready. So, yeah, there are those kind of factors.
But I think you bring up a good point, which is, it's pretty, I think it's pretty clear people really support some work to be done on the high school, and it would be great on the middle school as well to get those facilities sort of into the next generation. I think your question is, you put good money after that into the middle school at this point, or do you sort of do the high school and stand pat with the elementary schools until it's clear what should happen with the middle school? Maybe I'm mis, misproceeding what you're saying.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I would really, that would make sense.
Or like, people that can... What percentage? I couldn't hear you.
Can we walk?
Like, close enough. Yeah, yeah.
It's a new, it's just not working.
See, I don't think that the walking...
I don't, cause he, uh, the Chevron...
So you have to think about, like, it's Old Orchard Park, that's walkable, that's still part of this community. Um, same with, um... Crossing, Crossing Chevron Road?
If the boarding, if the car was changed, there were many more walkers.
High schoolers do. I mean, with their parents. What? Oh, okay, okay.
Well, well, see, all right, so...
All the parents weren't available to walk their kids.
So I would not define community school as being neighborhood school because, I mean, being walkable. And, and I will, you know, push back against Orchard parents on this one, you may not like me for saying this, but we tried a few years ago to change the busing pattern so that if you were within a further distance, you had to walk.
Right.
People were in uproar about that.
Which I was shocked about.
Yeah, that, that we would make them wa, that we would not have a bus within, so, I mean, no, we got lots of that.
Because we were, we were in the cut, we were in the cutoff, and I, we thought about it a lot and was like, like, that makes sense.
So my point is, you know, don't, you know, probably some of the same people are coming to me saying, "Don't take away my walkable school." Well, we tried to have you walk four years ago.
It's a size thing, it's a weak crossroad route to come to Orchard School. I feel every benefit of this neighborhood school. We have a kid in the middle school, it's a bigger school. Do I feel less connected to that school? Do I feel less...
Well, that's because they're, uh, they're teenagers almost, that's all, you know, that's...
So, Mark... We had this question, we had to do everything she did at this school for the middle school. I mean, there's a reason, it's, it's a little bit of a much bigger school.
Well, I, well, I disagree with that, and, and first of all, we're from, you know, the least neighborhood commu, and it seems like community, it was a community school. It was a community school. I mean, and everybody was there bused, maybe three kids walked. So that's not, the middle school is a whole different animal because it's...
Size, not bus.
Yeah, well, no, I know you're saying size, but I'm disagreeing that it's the size of school, it, it's, it's the purpose that they, that, that the administration starts trying to make the kids more independent and actually it's less inviting of parents to be there for a purpose, I, I would say is one. And the kids don't want their parents around as much, so it changes the whole dynamic.
I think if you were to make that's one central elementary school with 800 kids, you'd have a lot of the same dynamics. That's what I think. I, you're gonna, like, that's just, it's one opinion versus another, I'm sure somewhere in the middle's the truth.
That's connection.
Yeah.
Bigger school.
So we, we have, who has not had the opportunity to fill out a, a form yet? Who was not at the March 22nd?
We, we did it at the high school. I was under the impression that the results from that were not necessarily taken into account because of the grading system.
Well, they, we did some things to try to figure out, I mean, you could, you could tell by the comments on the front on what people considered one or five. So what you're supposed to do is five is your most favored on the back.
So they switched it? Wasn't it the opposite before? No, 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 that's how it was.
Did you have one of these before?
I had one before.
Well, you only get one, you only get to go once.
I put two votes. Um, two votes.
What was it, you went into again?
Well, it's just, you know, some kind, it's a feedback form.
One is status quo and two is I've done more, right.
Or, you know, upgrades, you know, that's more of the upgrades to more flexible...
I just wanted to say one thing about you're being surprised about Marquette. I was on city council in, in 2000, either, I did it, either 2007 or 2008, at a steering committee meeting this year, or, uh, they had a consultant came in and did a presentation based on closing Mar, Marquette's school, um, expanding this school and, and Chamberlain because noise wasn't an issue then, so there's been, and I didn't think form-based code was predicated on either Marquette staying or not staying, it was compatible with either.
Yeah, it was, I would say, yeah, it'd be compatible with either, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it didn't assume either.
No, no, it wasn't bas, no, it did not assume either, but I think that some of the people, including the person from the school board representing that the, the school board on that form-based code was, I got the feeling that it was considered would be fit in as a resident, you know, as a neighborhood school.
Oh.
Um, but, but that's...
Well, that was the idea, that it could go either way.
Right. Um, so I will hope, Jean, to make the decision or soon.
I think that it's very useful for the members of the board to give their outline, their pitch, that they should prepare presentations and covering what they've learned about this. They've had two consultant groups that have come in and consultants don't, aren't the panacea in these things. This is Locker, he's a builder, he's a campus builder, architect, and I think there's a lot of research and the individual can do it, you can do it under all. Find it now that you can Google things, you can find all kinds of material.
Right. That's true.
As for the busing part, it's flat out, people don't like change. You know, that's all it is. If you had just said, "Well, we're doing it," and just take all the hits for a year, then it would've settled down and that just would've been the new normal.
But we'd have to vote the money. We'd have to vote the money, so we'd have our vote.
Oh, for, only for a new school, right?
Or even for the enhancements.
Yeah, I was just talking about the busing change, where they were trying to take, take the, take away the buses.
So I should just make a decision on fifth grade and just take the hit on that?
No, but for something like that, the buses is a more minor, like, if you were gonna take away buses for the entire school, then of course you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to just make that decision.
Well, true, you can't please everybody.